Good evening, councillors, ladies and gentlemen. I'm councillor Sophia James on the Chair of the Adult Social Care, Children's Services and Education Committee. I'd like to welcome you all tonight to tonight's meeting, which councillors are now required to attend in person, following the expiry of the Coronavirus Act regulations, which permitted online meetings. We are meeting in a socially-distanced layout in the council chamber, with a small number of seats provided for the press and public. We'll be using new equipment connecting to the chamber to Microsoft Teams. There is a live stream available through Teams, and a recording of the meeting will be uploaded to the website afterwards. I have apologies tonight from councillor Absalom, councillor Hoskins, and councillor White will be joining us remotely. So moving on to item one, declarations of interest, of which there are none. Item two, we have the minutes. Does everyone have the opportunity to have a look at the minutes? Is everyone happy to agree the minutes? Agreed? Lovely. On to item three, which is minutes from other bodies, and we have the Health and Wellbeing Boards on the 19th of March and the 16th of July. No comments, no indications on the minutes, so are we all happy to agree? Wonderful. We have no petitions, and we have no questions from members of the public or councillors. We have no decision book references. So we'll be moving on to item eight, the Post-16 Update Report.
Can you see my report, the presentation?
We can, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I'm just going to try and navigate both screens, so just bear with me, everyone. I beg your pardon. Good evening, everyone. My name is Claire Martin, and I manage the Elevate Service. We are responsible for completing the statutory duties around young people's participation and engagement in education, employment and training after leaving compulsory education. This evening, I'm here to present the report on the participation of children looked after and care leavers who have successfully engaged into positive outcomes, such as education, employment or training. And in our practice, we abbreviate this to ETE activity and for those young people who are not engaged in education, employment and training as NEET. It is important to note that this report was co-produced together with the Virtual School and the Leaving Care team. The next couple of slides focuses on just some of the key successes and outcomes we've achieved together so far. Throughout the report, there are good examples of collaborative working within the network, and it just confirms that the support services cannot work in silo in order for us to successfully and effectively provide the right support at the right time, in the right place, to our young people. It was clear from the start of this partnership that we all shared the same vision, the same goals, which is to provide the best possible support service to our young people by helping them to recognise what their individual talents and skills are, and to give them the necessary tools, advice and support to help them to further develop these skills in order for them to reach their dream job or career in the future. We didn't let the pandemic stop us from being available and supporting our young people. We were able to respond quickly and adapt our services to offer a virtual service offer by providing a phone advice line, live chat, email and a messaging support service to our young people. This year, a monthly jobs and opportunities board has also been developed and is readily available on the Brighter Futures for Children website. Young people are also made aware of local opportunities on our live vacancy service on the Elevate database, which holds a number of different vacancies and employment and training opportunities for young people. This database has also allowed us to effectively match our young people against these opportunities. In January this year, the Elevate Service went into a strong partnership with the West Berkshire DWP to deliver the youth offer in Reading. This resulted in our setting up a youth skills and employment hub in the town centre, providing holistic support to vulnerable young people 16 to 24, who are NEET or risk of NEET. The hub is currently being delivered from the Curious Lounge, a new CIC company offering a safe, relaxed, modern space for our young people, delivering a one-stop careers and employment hub for young people to come in and meet with us. It allows us to engage positively worth employers, building stronger networks with local partners and providers and support services for the benefit of our young people. The strong partnership with the DWP has also allowed us to expand our partnership networks further, and has also allowed us to increase local post-18 opportunities. For example, we are receiving first-hand information on Kickstarter schemes and opportunities. The Elevate career coaches and the DWP work coaches are working closely together to support care leavers in receipt of universal credit, helping them to access training programmes and employment. We have also recently secured a second contract with the DWP to deliver a five-month intensive bespoke support package to our most vulnerable 18 to 24-year-olds who are NEET, offering impartial career advice, career planning, mentoring support, fitness and wellbeing sessions, and supported employment and work experience opportunities. And just last week, we also met with the West Berkshire DWP District Manager for Care Leavers to work together and agree a protocol on how best we could support our young people leaving care on accessing Job Centre Plus benefits prior to them turning 18, to ensure that this transition is as smooth as possible for the young person. Our various data reports also confirm that our NEET numbers have declined in the last three years. In August 2019, we had 44% of the cohort registered as NEET. This is both in borough and out of borough. This has declined by 13% in August 2021. Our quarterly reports that are published by the DFE on all 16 and 17-year-olds, children looked after and care leavers living in Reading who are engaged in ETE, those who are NEET, and those whose situation is currently not known. I'm pleased to say that in June 2021, we had 100% of our care leavers and 83% of our children looked after engaged in an ETE activity. Our results, these results, sorry, also confirm that we are actively engaging with our young people with a 0% not-known return. Our ETE performance is higher and our NEET performance is lower, both nationally and in the South East. How do we know we're making a difference? In 2019, Elevate was awarded NEET funding, and we utilised this funding to research and identify gaps in post-16 provision. It allowed us to think creatively, go out, source and commission post-16 programmes with local employers and providers, such as the Aspire Mentoring Programme, the Starting Point, and a supported employment programme with Ways into Work. Within the report, there is also lots of good evidence of good news case studies, feedback from young people and colleagues, confirming that we are making a difference and that the work we are doing is making a positive impact. Sorry, my computer's a bit slow, I beg your pardon. Co-producing and developing this report between us allowed us to take the time out to reflect on all the good work that we have so far developed. However, we also recognise that this is an ongoing journey, and within this report, we've also identified areas that we felt that we needed to further develop with more action. We know that the monthly NEET figures are going down, and that the ongoing work and the collaboration within the teams is making a positive impact on the numbers. However, there is still always more work to do within the network. We need to explore and plan for more further early intervention work, with a particular focus on supporting our care leavers and children looked after to sustain their post-16 learning, training and employment placements. We know that a large proportion of the NEET young people have no formal qualifications or walking away with a Level 1 or below qualification when leaving school or college. This is resulting in them entering into low-paid jobs, and we know that sometimes a direct consequence of being in a low-paid job is a form of insecurity, and young people are in and out of their jobs. Sorry, I beg your pardon. And when young people are in and out of their jobs, their chances of a long-term sustained career is reduced. So the network will work together with local provider networks to expand the training offer, to offer a wide range of training opportunities that combine both qualifications and work experiences. For example, through our work with young people, we were able to identify early on a gap in the construction sector. We had young people wanting to get into the construction centre but didn't want to go into college. So we worked with a local charity called New Meaning to work with them to develop a construction programme outside of DFE, and I'm pleased to say this started in September. We will continue to communicate, encourage and enable our young people to still achieve qualifications and experiences outside of the college or school environment. We know there are a growing number of unaccompanied asylum-seeking children and young people who need support with their future career planning and further help to fast-track them onto ESOL programmes. There has been a continued take-up of care leavers progressing into higher education. However, we know there is still more work needed to be done here, and our future focus is for us to both grow these numbers and also to support university retention. We will achieve this by supporting programmes such as Study Higher, increasing university mentoring programmes such as Spring Forward, and also targeting secondary school aged students by raising their aspirations, awareness and actively promoting university open days, alternative viable post-16 options. Another area we also identified and need to focus on is to decrease the dropout rates from post-16 learning. Many of our young people who are now registered NEET were enrolled on a full-time learning programme, which they were not able to sustain for longer than three months. We know a number of our young people have a history of illness, mental health, complex Zen needs, substance use or maybe living in unstable, unsupported accommodation, which could be preventing them from progressing into long-term sustained employment or training. For these young people, we will continue to actively promote bespoke re-engagement opportunities. For example, we recently commissioned a local employer called Last Mind set to offer its fitness, coaching, resilience and one-to-one personal training in a local gym. We have the Aspire Mentoring Programme, the Starting Point, which matches mentors who focus on building young people's confidence, self-esteem, offering them social and skills-building sessions. It is also evident throughout this report that we all have a key role to play in ensuring that we all continue to help our young people to recognise their individual talents and skills, raise their aspirations in order they can reach their full potential, which in turn should then enable them to live happier, healthier and more successful lives. We would like the committee to consider the contents of this report and to think about what more can be done to provide good quality post-16 opportunities for the young people of Reading in relation to the learning, training and work. And we've just given you some suggestions on what we think might be helpful around creating work experience opportunities, creating more supported internships and apprenticeships, re-establishing the guaranteed interview scheme, and maybe even just offering your time at various programmes to our young people and being inspirational speakers. Here are just some of the lovely comments received from some of our young people that we have supported. This is just confirming that the work we are doing is making a positive difference to the lives of young people that we are supporting. Thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you very much to Claire Martin for that exceptional report. I'm sure, as councillors, we all love talking, so I'm sure we can offer our time as inspirational speakers. Over to councillor Pearce.
Thank you, Chair. So I very much welcome this report and thank you to Claire for presenting. This is obviously about the provision and participation of our young people in employment, education and training. Despite the report being focused on our children looked after and care leavers, a small but obviously hugely important group, we've touched on the much wider picture of the provision in this area. The number of young people that are NEET is down overall. The data that we now have is far more accurate than previously, and the support we offer young people is far stronger. Brighter Futures for Children, Elevate there headed up by Claire Martin, and our Virtual School have all worked tirelessly to ensure our young people get the very best, and I'd like to thank all of the officers that have been involved in that. We've got an excellent and diverse range of external providers, some of which Claire spoke about, including the great mentoring at Starting Point, the bespoke learning and building at New Meaning, which if you haven't been, it's excellent, you should go visit on Portman Road, as well as our excellent hub in the town centre at the Curious Lounge. That's by no means an exhaustive list, and the key there is in the range of support that is on offer. And this is something that we'll continue to look at to widen and improve, especially as we finished on there in the area of apprenticeships and work-based schemes. So it's a very welcome report on the great work that's going on in this area, and we will look forward to how we can move it forward.
Thank you councillor Pearce. Councillor Terry?
Thank you, Chair. Just to add really is that this is an area that we were concerned about in the Corporate Parenting Panel, and this report actually came to Corporate Parenting Panel first. We were conscious that some time ago, the NEET figure seemed very high, and obviously that would affect children in care and care leavers. So it was a really positive report to receive, to see the work and the progress that's been made. The Virtual School has been for quite a long time, really a jewel in our crown in terms of our support for children in care and care leavers. And it's great to see that now coordinated and networked with Elevate and others to make sure that there's some really positive offers. Now, it's still challenging. It's still, you know, we've got children who, you know, have some trauma, have some challenges about some of this. But, you know, we've seen an increase in some of our children in care and care leavers going to university into further and higher education. And it feels that this is showing us a really positive impact that that new coordinated work is achieving. And we look forward to, certainly at the Parenting Panel, receiving a further report in the new year. I think we've asked for it just to give us an update on how things are going. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much councillor O'Connell.
Thank you. I also just want to thank you for the report. It's very, very thorough and remarkably positive, particularly the excellent reduction in NEETs amongst looked-after children. That is really something to be incredibly proud of, and I'm very, very impressed with that and keep up the good work. I did just pick up on the things that we could be looking towards in the future. And I only mention it because I got an inquiry from a young person as a local councillor, asking if the council offered work experience opportunities, and I can confirm that we do. I got a response back, giving the email address of the person that my young person can get in contact with. So it's a pleasure to let you know that we're already on the game with that.
That's excellent news. Thank you councillor. Councillor O'Connell?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you. I'd also like to endorse this report is a very thorough report, very, very positive. The last comment on the screen at the minute, I think, says it all really about the work that is being achieved. One thing which was briefly touched upon there, perhaps we could have a little more information, was where we're at with apprenticeships. There are obviously more vocational qualification, but still give the potential for a lifetime's employment. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Mpufi-Coles?
Thank you very much for your report, and it's very insightful. I just wanted to also compliment on the fact of young people. I went to U Farringdon the other day to just talk to a group of young people who now want to volunteer in weekly, in community centres as part of their project that they want to do. So it's very commendable. Thank you very much.
Claire, did you have any comments or responses on what had been mentioned so far?
I just want to say about apprenticeships that I'm pleased to say that it is growing. The sectors are growing. I think with COVID, we know that the sectors that were impacted the most, hospitality, catering, retail, leisure. But we are starting to see growth. We are starting to see the opportunities come through. I think one of the areas that we do need to think about is supported apprenticeships, because we do have a lot of young people who don't have Level 2 qualifications, who don't hold Level 3 qualifications, and all of the apprenticeships that are on offer start at Level 2. So it's maybe thinking more about how we can offer more supported, lower-level apprenticeships. That's where we are seeing a massive gap, particularly in Reading. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I see no further indications, so are the committee happy to note the report? Thank you. Okay, so next up on the agenda, I'm really pleased to say that we've been joined by Calvin and Maximilian from our Youth Council, who are going to be talking about their constitution.
Good evening. I'm Maximilian, and I'm the Deputy Chair of the Reading Youth Council. So about a year and a half ago, I went to the annual Reading Youth Council Conference, and I was a representative for my school. And as soon as I entered the room, I felt that this was for me and that I wanted to make a change for Reading. So in the Reading Youth Council, one of our aims is to provide a voice for all of our diverse Reading youth in our community, and to pass it on to our leaders. So sadly, our work was a little bit reduced when COVID came. However, we still continued to do this online, and as soon as restrictions were lifted, we did many projects, such as our litter pick from our Environment Campaign, where we went around Prospect Park and its vicinity, and we took rubbish and materials and put them into bags. We collected about eight bags, and about 25% of this was actually disposable masks. So it's quite a big impact, and we decided that this would be one of our things that we want to research further into. And as well, our mental health campaign actually looked at making resources for self-care. And another thing I did as the Deputy Chair myself and with some of my members, we went to Upton Court and talked to our community, and they told us any issues that they had and any concerns that they would like to raise. And we also actually got to recruit two new members from it. So I thought it was a great success. And we want to build a bridge with the Reading Borough Council to make links easier to pass on ideas that any members of our community have said to decision-makers or leaders. So now I would like to pass the mic to Calvin, our NYPD.
Thank you, Maximilian, and good evening, everyone. My name is Calvin, and I'm the Member of Youth Parliament for Reading. In terms of our priorities from the past year, it's primarily been to ensure that the pandemic has not completely halted any and all of our operations by adapting to the challenges that have come with social distancing and with falling member numbers. What we have achieved, however, is that we firstly delivered our annual conference, which occurs every January, and it's effectively our chance to showcase our findings from our three campaigns. And albeit this was online, and it has made engagement a struggle, we're glad to have still been able to deliver what we still consider to be quite a successful year for the Youth Council. And we are still currently progressing on each of our three campaigns as laid out by the British Youth Council. For the minute, these are Stop Plastic Pollution, effectively tackling our plastic consumption and seeing how the young people of Reading can actively take a role in this. Mental health, we've recently been involved in the movement Fund the Hubs, which is effectively petitioning for more and more young people to have a local residency or area that they can come to for trustworthy advice. And finally, Transforming Education, which has been arguing for university fees to be cut down for students from disadvantaged communities, and that's something that we are still currently working on as well. What is working well is that we are continuing to maintain strong contact with every school that we have a member in, and we have actively been electing people into Youth Council roles, such as a Democracy in Participation Officer. Aside from being a member of the Youth Council, we have the opportunity for members to take up a further role. Challenges we have faced. As previously mentioned, member numbers are falling as the rate at which more and more stop attending meetings is greater than the rate at which we can appoint new ones. This has been the case since the start of the pandemic, as people seem to hate working virtually, and there have actually been cases where some of the more inactive members of our group have contacted me personally to ask when face-to-face meetings will resume. It doesn't seem like so much of an obligation to a lot of people if it's all virtual, so they oftentimes like to take the excuse and the chance just to miss it, which is a shame. The reason why, however, we cannot recruit more members at a faster rate is because there is a thorough application process involving launching a campaign and a vote from students across Reading and ourselves. However, in terms of the future, we remain incredibly optimistic. Now more than ever, our emphasis is to gain more members. We're positive that there are plenty of strong candidates out there. Speaking from personal experience, there are a number of young people that have reached out to me personally, wondering when the application window will open once again. And we are glad to confirm that this would be in February of 2022. What's good is that our Youth Council certainly isn't falling behind compared to other Youth Councils across the country, not just within the South East. And I know this as I've spoken regularly with other NYPDs. Some of their Youth Councils, to give you all an idea, currently have an active number, member number, that you can count on just one hand. This is a rough patch that will be healed with time and with the help of lots of new enthusiastic members that we hope to admit soon. We are now free to take any questions you may have.
Thank you both so much for that. That was excellent. A couple of comments from me. Firstly, you're always welcome back in this council chamber, and I'm sure that is the same for other committees. So thank you very much for giving such confident speeches tonight and an overview of your excellent activities. I think we've all felt the impact of COVID over the last year or so. So it's a particularly difficult time for young people and certainly difficult to engage anyone. I think we'd all sympathise with that. And I am completely with you on your whole environmental aims and also university tuition fees, which, like many in the room, have been campaigning against for a very, very long time. So well done, both of you. That was excellent. Councillor Terry?
Thank you, Chair. I was happy to listen to the colleagues that had other questions. I mean, thank you for coming. We met a while ago, didn't we? I mean, obviously, this is to endorse the constitution, but it's not, you know, and we're really happy to do that. I'm sure we'll be happy to do that later. But it's really about that re-engagement piece, really, that, you know, some of us have been involved with the Youth Council, but we definitely like to see and hear more of you. I suppose the only other thing that I perhaps was going to raise is about how to get out there to more schools, to get, you know, more schools involved and a wider and diverse membership. I don't know if you've got any thoughts or plans about that, or if you do?
Yeah, I mean, I think the problem isn't that there isn't an interest, because what you'll find is that a lot of schools will oftentimes have some sort of youth engagement or safeguarding officer that handles these kind of external relations. And schools would, you know, they would publicate any sort of contacts that they have on their website that we are doing our best to reach out to. The issue is that, of course, some perhaps don't have the time to respond to that, because within that, there is a lot of commitment in terms of organising a group of students that they can put forward for the application process. But it's something that we can say we have been doing more of because we are now having more and more members each time from a wider range of schools in Reading.
Thank you, Chair. Such a pleasure to have you both here in our, gosh, sorry, in our chambers tonight. Lovely to meet you, Maximilian, and lovely to meet you again, Calvin. So pleased that we're working together on Plastic Free Caversham and waiting for you to sign that form, so get that done shortly. But on a more practical note, you're saying you're struggling to get, I guess, lots of people to sign up, and the applications come up in February. Have you reached out to Reading Museum? Because often, they do a lot of things in the community, and they plug into schools, and it's kind of anchored to the curriculum so that it could be anchored your involvement, so you get a bit more engagement. Is that something that you think would might help you guys get a bit more young people involved?
Yeah, I mean, it hasn't, to be honest, been something that we have considered, but it is definitely an avenue that we'd like to explore now that you've brought it up. Thank you.
Lovely to see you guys again.
Likewise.
Councillor O'Connell?
Hi. I'm, when I'm not doing this, I'm actually a teacher in a secondary school in Reading. And I just would like to reflect back to you. The excitement that was generated in our school the last time that you held your elections, there was such a buzz. There were tutor periods devoted to it, and there was just this feeling of engaging with stuff. And for a lot of young people, I think it was the first time that they had started thinking about, oh, could I get involved? Could I be part of something like this? So I just want you to take that away, to know that you do have an impact on schools. And I'm really, really looking forward to the next election you have and seeing that buzz going around our school again. And hopefully, we'll get some people elected to sit alongside you. And thank you for coming.
Yeah, just to respond to that, thank you a lot. For a lot of our members, we have a lot that have, that have actually never been here for face-to-face meetings that have joined during this virtual era. And for them, it can oftentimes feel quite blank, you know, being behind the screen and whatnot. But no, thank you for your comment. It's something that I'll definitely pass along to the rest.
Councillor Singh?
Thanks, Stuart. My question that youth is the future of our countries. But I want to know that youth are going for inner drug issues. They have a stress there, they have a mental issues. How can we do it awareness and improve this?
Sorry, is that how we raise awareness?
My mainstay, the young and youth are the future of our countries. But they are involved in a drug, they are stressed there and the mental health. How can we improve them?
So the question to read
How to aware?
Is about mental health and drugs and supporting wellbeing of young people effectively.
Well, that's a very good question. I think one way to tackle it, as Maximilian had brought up, is this collaboration that we have and to work more closely than ever. Because it's something that would require quite a multilateral approach. We as young people, we have the drive and we have the ambition to take on a lot, but we'd also require your services and your help with that. To deal with the, you know, to deal with mental health, it's a challenge. And it's something that's an everyday fight for a lot of young people. Our role is to be there for them and to ensure that the young people of Reading have a voice and that we're able to represent any mental health issues or any suggestions that they have at all.
Thank you. Because of my means, because they are future of our countries. If we not keep aware it at the moment, our future going dark.
I agree.
Thank you.
I think we all agree that young people are the future. Councillor Ballsden?
Thank you, Chair, and thank you again for coming and talking to us. I know that you're here really about the constitution as well as giving us an update. But following on from councillor Singh, I'm interested to know how we can work better with you on trying to dissuade young people from carrying knives. North of the river, we've very sadly had deaths of young people. And in Reading itself, of course, there've been slightly older people who, you know, adults who have been murdered. I'm interested to hear your ideas on how we can work better with you to try and stop people from carrying knives. Thanks.
So last year, when we had our knife crime campaign, we were thinking of doing like summer classes, defence classes. So to learn how to, let's say, disarm a person with a knife. And that was one of the ideas we had raised with it. And we were thinking of making posters and stuff to try and say that carrying a knife is illegal and that it's not the best form of protection.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I think oftentimes there's a stereotype that is that young people now more than ever are carrying knives because they have the intention to harm others. And in the majority of those cases, it's because they actually have the intention to protect themselves. They fear that someone else must have a knife, therefore they should to, as a form to counter that. A couple of years ago, when we had been working on the knife crime campaign, we had released a report with the Thames Valley Police, effectively compiling a set of questionnaires and surveys and all sorts of sampling from young people across Reading. And that was the key finding that a lot of them who have either carried a knife or know of someone who has carried a knife, they've done it with the intention, with the motive, just to defend themselves. So one way that we've tried to move forward from that before the pandemic sort of threw and swept everything aside was an introduction into a self-defence class as into a way of how to escape either a verbal or physical altercation and to promptly inform the police after. It's, it's an ongoing challenge, of course, as you had brought up. It's incredibly sad and it's something that's very up to date. So yes, it's something that we are looking to address more and more.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just going to return to councillor Terry.
Thank you, Chair. I suppose just as we're finishing off, was there any questions you hoped we'd ask you and we didn't? Is there anything you wanted to, you were holding back and wanting to say? I always like that. It's also a sort of interview question, isn't it, as well? I think we, you know, if we've covered everything that you wanted to cover, then that's fine. It was really great to hear from you. But do remember that we are here and that we are happy to engage with you. But I also like the fact that it's your youth council. It's about what you do and choose to do, and I think you need to hold on to that autonomy as well so that you can talk to yourselves as young people about what you think is missing or could be done better or how you can do some self-help things that you've talked about. But do come back and tell us some more about it and do let us know if we can help you in any way. So thanks again for coming.
Thank you both. And don't forget that you can also come to our full council meetings or any committees. You can ask us questions, you can put forward petitions. We want to get you involved in our democracy as well. So please don't worry about the link. We're on board and happy to help if we can.
Thank you for the opportunity and thank you all for your time. I wish you all a wonderful evening. Thank you for having us.
Thank you for coming. Lovely. Okay, on to item nine, which is the review of the send admissions policies and arrangements. Deborah Glassbrook?
Good evening, everyone. So the report that you have before you is an update following a presentation to ACE Committee in January 2021 in relation to the school admissions arrangements for the community primary schools. And what was said in that report was that indeed we were reviewing the arrangements and the admissions policies for the other schools. And particularly what we wanted to understand is what was working well in relation to those children who've got education, health and care plans. And so what I'm doing this evening is bringing back the findings of that piece of work as outlined in the, in the report. And you'll see under the policy context that children with education, health and care plans are not placed in schools through the usual school admissions policies and arrangements. They're placed in schools by special educational needs team through that consultation process with schools based on the needs reflected in children's individual plans. And through doing this, this review work, both in terms of looking at the policy with the Holy Brook, but also looking at the arrangements we have with the Avenue School, Cranbury and Hamilton, we've been able to improve the working arrangements and the communications to make sure that children are getting their places in a much more timely and efficient way. We're also just in the process of developing service level agreements for all of the resource spaces across the borough. And we are writing new admissions processes that will be agreed in relation to those as well. And I'm going to hand over because I know that councillor Pearce has got something he'd like to say particularly about the element in relation to the Oak Tree, if that's okay, councillor James. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Deborah. Yeah, so as Deborah covered, this is largely, would have been largely a sort of procedural report. Most of our secondary schools, our academies and their responsible third admissions, but the relationship of the Holy Brook has shown we can improve things which we'll look to do with the Avenue and Hamilton. Included in the report is the proposed delay in the opening of the Oak Tree Academy School. This is the new SEN school that will be run by Maidenhead Early Trust to be based in Winash. It's a joint project between ourselves and Wokingham. 150 young people with ASC will attend in the end. Originally due to open in 2022, we've been informed by the Department for Education, as it is their project, that this will now not be possible. No places Reading pupils had been earmarked. There is no initial disappointment. But of course, this is going to have big knock-on effects on placing pupils next year and on our budgets. We are, of course, working with our Wokingham counterparts and the Department for Education to get this project back on track as soon as possible and are in discussions around funding and accommodating our pupils in other Reading schools if the September 22 opening date can't be met.
Thank you, councillor Pearce. Councillor Ballsden?
Thank you, Chair. Sorry, I always really should declare my personal interest in the Avenue School because I've been chair of governors for over 40 years, something like that. And obviously, that's, the admissions to the Avenue School is in this report. I'm interested to hear committee members' views on, on the admissions from the perspective of the school and the governing body. I believe we continue to work very well and closely with, right? I always forget the acronym, sorry, with the organisation and here. And would be happy to take any feedback to the school from other councillors. The Avenue is doing all it can to increase its place numbers to help with the ever-increasing, sadly, number of special needs children in the borough and outside who need send places. And very happy always to take councillor Pearce around the school to show him. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Pearce.
Yeah, I'd be happy to take it off that. We've always worked incredibly well with the Avenue and Simon. So it's, and they've always been very helpful in doing, you know, outreach and satellites as well. So yeah, we're delighted with the relationship we've got with the Avenue.
Councillor O'Connell?
Thank you. I was a bit concerned, as I am, no doubt you will be. The, what dates have they, I mean, is there a date at all for it? And also, I mean, this is going to really hit funding surely if those places aren't available.
So yeah, the, we're still in discussions with the D F E. So we can't really say any much, much more than that, that myself, my counterparts in Wokingham, as well as the MP for Maidenhead and the MP for Reading East have all been in discussions with the D F E and lobbying for some answers. So we wait and see and, you know, there will be a contingency plan if it doesn't open in 2022. But, you know, our aim is to get that date it to open then, whether we, you know, by hook or by crook is the aim. So the ball is in the D F E's court for that.
Councillor Shikali?
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Pearce, just a quick question about the educational healthcare plans. How many of them are converted in the advised timing?
Councillor Pearce?
Thank you. So we were starting from a fairly low point a few years ago, around a third. And we're now, obviously, it alters slightly month by month, but essentially basically 100% within the statutory timeframe, which, you know, is excellent for our families and children in providing the sort of clarity and assurance of the provision they're going to get. And it's, you know, it's been consistently high now for quite, quite a few months going into years. And that's a figure that favoured very comparably to other local authorities.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I see no further indications. So are the committee happy to agree the recommended actions? Lovely. Thank you. On to item 10, that is the Send Strategy Progress Report.
Yes, thank you. So this is my opportunity to share with you the latest send strategy that we have updated in response to our send local area inspection. I thought it would just be helpful for me to share with you what happened in the inspection so that you have the context of how we've got to this updated strategy that you have before you this evening. So the local area inspection looks at children's social care, health, education and all of our partners, including children, families and the voluntary sector. And the inspection took place between the 21st and 25th of June. And inspectors spoke to children and young people with special education needs and disability and their parents and carers. And indeed, we had 23 focus groups in the week while they were here. They visited eight settings, they met with 140 colleagues and they had 99 documents uploaded to the portal, including 115 education, health and care plans. We're delighted to be able to report that unlike the majority of local authorities, we were not provided with a written statement of action. A written statement of action is delivered by Ofsted where they have got serious concerns about any element of those areas that they have been inspected. And so, of course, that's extremely good news for Reading. What they did say about in terms of results, that they could see that the quality of care for children with S E N D in Reading is improving. They're saying that we've got determination to make Reading a good place for our children, young people, that leaders recognise and have plans to address the issues that worry our parents most. That as professionals, we work well together. There's better early identification for children with S E N D. That there were many examples of established co-production and joint working helping to identify children's needs in a timely way. That school and early years settings are well supported by education and health services. And schools have collaborated to make the curriculum support all pupils to learn. Schools and early years settings are well supported by professionals. And this support, together with a good range of training available, is helping practitioners to more quickly spot children who may need some extra help. Improving outcomes included a reduction in the number of pupils being excluded by schools. And this has been the adoption of the therapeutic thinking approach. And indeed, until recently, there had been no permanent exclusions and there have only been two more recently. The improvements to services are planned and delivered in genuine partnership with parents and young people included as standard. The outcomes for pupils with education, health and care plans are in line with or above the national average by the time they leave primary school. In secondary schools, pupils with special education needs and disabilities in Reading attain better results than their peers nationally. More places have now been created as part of the wider plan to increase specialist school places. And increasingly, young people are centrally involved in the design of services. And as a result, services are more likely to be responsive to the needs of young people. What they then identified for us and with us was the next steps and some recommendations. And it's those recommendations and next steps that you will see embedded within the next strategy, which, as I say, is before you for 2022 to 27. So what we're working on now is reducing the waiting times for the assessments for any child on the autistic spectrum or having ADHD. Improving identification of needs for those children who are naught to two, who we know who've been particularly impacted by Covid. We want to make sure that we support children with S E N D to be ready for school. And we want to make sure we've got an ongoing development of specialist education places. We are working really hard and in a really focused way to ensure that all elements of children's education, health and care plans are strong. And we want to strengthen the offer for young people with very complex needs, working with our partners in adult, adult services for those children who are 18 to 25. So we have revised our S E N D strategy and it's including all the learning and actions identified from this inspection. Now, one of the things that is slightly frustrating is we had been waiting the government's review of S E N D reforms. There has been three delays for those reforms to come forward. And as things stand at the moment, there is no date for when those reforms will be published. So rather than waiting for those reforms, we've gone ahead. We've rewritten our S E N D strategy, as I say, in light of the very positive outcomes that we had from our local area inspection. And we have embedded all of that, as I say. And we have increased the number of areas of work of strands by two. So what you'll see on page five of the strategy is strand six and strand seven have been added to again strengthen the strategy overall. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Councillor Terry?
Councillor Pearce, my apologies.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, this report and strategy has had a huge amount of work going into it over several years. And as Deborah's mentioned, it is a genuine co-production with pupils, parents, schools and teachers. As touched on there, we can and have produced our S E N D strategy review, even if the government can't. The Ofsted and C Q C inspection, as Deborah mentioned, didn't require a written statement of action. That doesn't sound a lot, but is actually a very rare occurrence. That doesn't sound a lot, but is actually a very rare occurrence of this type of inspection. That local inspection letter gave us some pointers on how we can improve, which has led to the two new strands of capital and school places, as well as revenue and funding added to the overall strategy. The strategy also importantly aligns with Brighter Futures for Children and the council's other strategies, which has not always been the case in the past, which is encouraging. It's a working and practical document that will directly influence schools and the provision for our young people. Its success will be judged on a daily basis in our schools with our young people, but also in the views and opinions of parents and the wider public. But more formally, reports will be coming back to schools forum and Health and Wellbeing Board on its implementation and success. So the report gives us a great basis to take SCM provision on in Reading and into the next steps in the, into the next level in future.
Thank you councillor Terry.
Yeah, thank you Chair. Just to work with the report, I think for councillor Pearce and I, it feels a little bit like that happened in June. And, you know, the time sort of moves on, but we mustn't forget the enormous amount of work that went into that inspection period, both in terms of staff and brighter futures and council staff, but also the children and families who, you know, met with the team who came in to look at what we're doing. I have to say, we knew the inspection would eventually come, had been waiting and waiting for it. So I think there had been a good deal of preparation and that's, you know, that's a good thing. And they could see that our future plans were robust. It's unfortunate to hear the delay over in Wokingham, but these things happen, don't they? I think we should also note that whilst we focus a lot, this is around children in education. This early identification is really important, you know, working with our, the midwives and health visitors. The naught to two year old is a really important time and you will remember at policy committee only recently we've used some of the Covid funding that we have to improve some of the work we're doing around making sure that the developmental delays that may have occurred or caused, you know, because of Covid, not seeing people, that we're doing some extra work to make sure that we're not missing any children and picking up on the recommendations in here. And there's work on speech and language, for example, so that early readiness and ensuring that children's needs are identified as early as possible. So there's a lot of ongoing work to do some of the, what's the impact of Covid? But this strategy clearly is setting out for the longer term, the kind of work and investment that we need to make to make sure that, that children who have an early identification of special needs get support and work very early on, because sometimes that can ensure that they go on to thrive and do well in mainstream schools without the need to go into any special provision, for example. So we'll, we'll, we'll see how that goes. But it's, it was really reassuring and marks another moment, I think, in recognising that the progress that children's services are making in Reading and have come a long way from some years ago when it felt like we weren't joined up, we didn't really know exactly what we were doing. We didn't have the plans in place and we weren't sure what we should do next. I think that's very clear that that is not the case anymore. Thank you Chair.
Thank you councillor Terry. Councillor O'Connell.
Thank you. And the report really does hopefully give everybody a boost in confidence that Reading is doing all it can, that the movement forward from that dark place we were in just seems steady and it's all on a healthy upward trajectory. I don't, I don't know if you can answer my slight query. It sometimes seems to me sort of that the backlog isn't necessarily with yourselves. It's with CAMHS and the capacity of CAMHS to sort of offer the specialist diagnosis and support that then this strategy can get on with helping. You know, you have to be diagnosed and, you know, sort of in the system before you can start actually accessing all of these services. And it's, it's like we're ready to go, but, you know, are the people coming through who need it? And are we still going to be able to make that early intervention? If we're not getting those diagnoses to know who to pop in, it's like we're chomping at the bit, we're ready to go. But that maybe the people aren't coming through. I'm hearing anecdotally more and more of parents sort of going private. And that's a lot for working families to try and do. But they recognise that if they've got a child in their early teens and they're, you know, showing signs of being on the spectrum, by the time they even get to the first stage, you know, that child's going to be sitting their GCSEs and we've missed those opportunities. So I suppose I'm querying CAMHS in this and congratulating you guys for being sort of ready to go when we've got the diagnosis, but have we got a bigger problem here? And is there anything that we can do about that side of things?
Thank you.
No, thank you very much for that question. I think as part of the local area, we're very mindful about the opportunities for our children to be identified as early as possible and the opportunity for them to be assessed as early as possible. I can share the very positive news that in the working with the, our local CCG, the Clinical Commissioning Group, we have identified this as an issue and they have come up with, I think it's about 1.8 million pounds. Please don't quote me exactly on that, but it's well over a million pounds for us to have some money in the year to be able to provide better and more timely assessments and indeed some more monies for the next year. So, yes, so, you know, this is about the local area. So I think what's important is to recognise that this is about how we work together with health. This is about working with education and for us to see what's happening in the system across the piece so that we can identify it. And I think that's just one of those examples where our health colleagues have identified the issue alongside us and have actually come up with the, with the money.
Okay councillor Terry, did you also want to respond? Do you are happy? Lovely. And I'd just like to comment that this is an incredibly positive inspection, inspection report. I think everyone knows the stress of various inspections when they come in, how much work is involved. But I'm really proud of how, you know, SEND children are being looked after in this town. So it's incredibly positive. Are the committee happy to agree with the report? Lovely. All agreed. Okay, moving on to item 11, which is the safeguarding annual report. Shona.
Thank you Chair. So this is the safeguarding board's annual report. It's actually Reading Borough Council's element to it. Because this will be the contribution that goes into the Berkshire West annual safeguarding report where all partners report and part of Berkshire West is also West Berkshire and Wokingham. So this is, this is our element of that report. And the full report will come back to committee at a later stage Chair. So I think it's really for committee to note and question as, as they wish. I just suppose it's just really helpful to kind of outline that the CARE Act obviously has been in force now for some time since 2014. And this report is now a statutory requirement and the formation of a multidisciplinary safeguarding board to oversee adult safeguarding in the community is also there and to assure itself that people are protected and they have positive outcomes as a result of any interventions that we make. So this was a strange year in terms of this covers Covid. And you will see from the data, there are some anomalies which wouldn't ordinarily be the case. We've had a high rise, but we've had a high rise of referrals, as you'll note. But the conversion from what is a concern, which is really a referral to an inquiry, which is an investigation for simplicity, is reduced. And we're obviously aware that the lack of face-to-face contact with people during Covid meant that we weren't receiving the number of inquiries. But obviously post-Covid, we're now in that period of picking those up. And I think it's really important to highlight to committee because I think I've now sat here for three years with this report and we have often discussed the targeting in the communities, particularly in the ethnic minority, mixed Asian and black population, that we haven't been, had referrals from that community and that it is, it has been more challenging. And there has been an increase in the referrals because we've been doing some significant work in order to ensure equity across the, the whole of the borough and to ensure that we reduce any inequalities that they may be as a result of not dealing with any safeguarding. So, so I think that's a real progress. It's work in progress, still got some way to go. But it indicates that the interventions that we've had in round, in terms of making an impact in terms of increasing those. The referrals that we get remain around neglect and acts of admission. And when I talk about acts of admission, it's failures to provide medication in the correct way as an example or failure of a carer to provide care in a way. They're still the majority of referrals and neglect can take a number of forms from family members and people in the community. And obviously, we talk about financial abuse and we have seen numbers of cases where there is financial abuse and pressures on families, particularly where there may be relatives who have not got capacity and who may have a considerable amount of money. We do see quite complex and challenging situations to deal with in that. I think that I want to highlight the committee really a major achievement, which members will have read in the report about money we secured on a national grant that was available due to the impact of Covid, which has resulted in 58,000, which we have to develop a hoarding pathway. And we know that we have a significant number of people in Reading who suffer from hoarding and self-neglect. And it's a very challenging area to address because it isn't a matter of being able to intervene, make somebody safe and go away. It's longer term work. So we're really pleased that we secured that money. And the person started working a fortnight ago and is already making an impact and linking with health colleagues in order to try and ensure that we address this cohort people and improve the outcomes for them. Appendix two and three, A and B, sorry. A covers the data and I won't go through the data in detail because I think highlighted some of those issues. And the other aspect of B is that obviously the examples of achievements in terms of work that's been done to contribute to improving the outcomes of residents of Reading. So I think if I stop there Chair and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you to Shona Douglas for that report. Councillor Ennis.
Yeah, thank you Chair. And apologies for lateness. I had a good reason. Very much welcome this report and I think it's the importance growing more and more now of safeguarding vulnerable adults. In the past, we've always prioritised safeguarding children. But I think even pre-pandemic, it's been growing more and more as in many ways positive that people are living longer, but the negative is becoming more and more vulnerable. And I think it's so important and so much of a priority that we, we receive reports and scrutinise and monitor in public in a cross-party basis within ACE, the data and the situation with safeguarding vulnerable adults. And also want to note the importance of multi-agency working. I don't think it's the council's duty alone. The statutory partners need to be involved, health, police and others. And also the voluntary sector. And I think it's more and more coming to the fore. And I think the difficult situation with the pandemic has made it more important, much more of a priority because even before the pandemic issues were coming to the fore about carers, about caring for vulnerable adults, about neglect and other issues as well. So it is a priority and note 4.1, the current position in the data and also the 4.3, which we would need to monitor and scrutinise and ensure that there is progress and there is diligence being made within this report. So very much welcome it and thanks Shona for her comments and hard work to the team. Very much so in difficult times and difficult situations. And commend the report to the panel. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Ennis. Councillor O'Connell.
Thank you ever so much and thank you very much for the report. I, just a side point in some ways, really, really pleased to hear about the money that you've managed to acquire to tackle hoarding. I think it's long been a sort of hidden problem that causes not just the individuals and their families issues, but can sort of impact on neighbours and the wider community. I, having sort of come across this a few times as a councillor, it's often the neighbours who pick up on the first signs of this. These individuals may not be engaged with any services. How are we developing a way for those people perhaps to report signs? Because the last thing that the neighbours I've spoken to want to do is get them into any trouble. They recognise they're often people, as you said, with complex needs. And they don't want to grasp them up or have people coming in heavy-handedly and telling people off when they're concerned about the mental health of their neighbours. Is it also something that we as councillors, you know, who are sort of embedded within the communities we represent, you know, can help with? How, how do you foresee this sort of developing and people being able to feed into it and improve things? Thanks councillor O'Connell. I mean, it is a very complex area and we're often intervening at people's, you know, we're trying to persuade and negotiate because we can't, like children, lift them and take them out. That's the other issue. It would be so much easier if we could. What we try to do and certainly this post is work, we work with our environmental health colleagues quite often. Because some of the issues that you talk about, I think, often come under the health and safety grounds. And it's about, so how far do you allow things to go before you intervene? And when you do intervene, how can you intervene? Because actually, if people say no and shut the door and they've got capacity, we have no way of intervening. And so that's, that's why we try to use other colleagues in the council to help us where there are high risks. So environmental health is quite often people will talk to and engage with and support us where we're in some of those dilemmas. But yes, as councillors, you have, you know, I think everybody has a role and it is usually the neighbours who pick things up. And, and the awful part around it is saying sometimes neighbours, we can't do anything about it because they feel frustrated, they're concerned, you know, because when it becomes a higher in safety risk, we've got ways in. We work with the fire service quite often because they're usually people who can intervene in a very sensitive way and be quite supportive because people kind of respect them in a different way to the police. Yeah, absolutely. So, I mean, part of the role with this work is to try and build that multi-agency network and to try and look at how we kind of pull together. But it is, it's never a simple issue and it's really difficult. And quite often we need GPs to look at mental health issues as well. So it's, it's a range of ways. There's no one case fits all. And that's one of the things that we're challenged by.
Councillor O'Connell.
Thank you. Just a follow-up question. I wonder if maybe we could have some, an appropriate point in the future when these individuals had a chance to sort of bed in. Maybe we could have some kind of update. I would find that really positive. See how it's going and applaud the work that they're doing. Absolutely. Really happy. We'll, we'll book a slot in ACE before her nine months is up to make sure she brings and feedback to you the product. And it's been based on research, so we'll come back with some of that as well. No problem.
Thank you very much for that. Councillor Balsdon.
Thank you Chair. And I share the joy at the success of getting this funding grant. Really, really important because as previous speakers have said, anyone suffering from hoarding, they generally are highly complex cases. Cases that I've dealt with, with my councillor hat on, have taken me by surprise. You know, this can be people who are holding down a full-time job. Very intelligent, high-performing people who one would never, ever expect to, to fall into this bracket. And it can also be people who maybe have an alcohol, alcohol problem or mental health, as others have said. And what I'd particularly be interested in is what baseline information the council has. I mean, I think each of us as councillors, door knocking, we're probably well aware of, of some individuals in our respective wards. But it would be good to know if, if the council has a handle on how many in each ward. And to ensure And to ensure that maximum use of this grant money is used. It would be good, as I say, to have baseline. And when we have the review that councillor O'Connor has advocated, which I support, for us to be able to see the difference that has been made, excuse me.
Thank you.
Thanks Chair. And it's, there's two bits to that question. It's very difficult to say there are X number of people in X number of wards because quite a lot of people won't come to our attention, as you've quite rightly said. They're people who wouldn't traditionally come to our doorstep for services or, or are not kind of in links with services that would pick up those issues. So it would be very difficult to say there are so many people. The only data we have is that which comes to us. And one of the challenges is the categories of abuse, as you will see on page 224, are split out in the way in which they are. And that's our national reporting system. And so hoarding isn't actually a category. And so it's really challenging to differentiate that because it's often with other issues. So it will come under self-neglect generally, but so will lots of other cases. What I think we're trying to do is in terms of get a baseline, is you'll see that the set out of the project is that we want to kind of determine what are the outcomes. And that's what I would want to bring back to you, is what difference has it made in terms of the outcomes for individuals? So have we targeted more people? Have we changed more people's lives? Have we linked more people with other services? I think they would be things that we'd be able to tell you. We'll be able to tell you the numbers. But it's not easy to disaggregate from our national reporting system, how many are hoarding and how many are neglected by family. That's one of the challenges that we have around, around the system issues. But we will know what we're working with as a cohort of people and can demonstrate that to you hopefully when we come back with this sort of short report around the evaluation.
Thank you. Councillor MP Ficos?
Oh, thank you Chair. I just wanted, I had looked at the report and one of the things I wanted to ask is about the people from the ethnic minorities, the percentage is low, but you've said there's an increase in that. Have you noticed what is probably trying to find out is the, the information that we put out that it should come in different languages? As you know, we are in a diverse town so that they're able to understand. Because sometimes what we call safeguarding or abuse in other cultures is not. And they don't understand those links between the law that is mandatory here, that these things should be reported and something that people might look and say, it's normal in our, in our culture. I'm not saying that's exactly what happens, but it's an example of that. And maybe the literature that goes out also on safeguarding issues. Because nationally, you might see a different picture, especially in London where places, there is a lot of reporting on that because they've tried to do the languages differently. Is this something that we could look at and to try? I'm not saying people are abused, but I'm just saying maybe trying to find out why you are not getting the responses as such, although you do get them. Is there something that we're missing along the way so that we could support this very much to be out there?
Shona, before you answer, I did cheekily want to ask what the officers have been doing in terms of outreach to black and Asian communities. So if you could tack that on the end.
So I think, I think that the, the issue is, I think you're right. I think we're on a journey and I don't think we're there. We have a new permanent assistant director for safeguarding policy performance and practice. And she's just currently, she's in about week eight, week nine, is, is doing a whole review of the safeguarding issue. And we actually were talking about the need to review the safeguarding website and exactly what you've raised around the issue around languages. So that will be something that we will build, need to build into our action plan. The West Berkshire Action Plan is around the need to look at that and our website material as well. Because more and more people are accessing that, I think so. And in response to the answer about what we're doing more, I think there's been some work done with the voluntary sector in cooperation in trying to just kind of be more informative of groups and that that's just had a small impact. And so I think again, that's the way of kind of using, using the mechanisms we've got through our voluntary partners who are key often to helping us reach communities. And again, I mean, I think that, that's all the work that, that Joe Lappin, our new assistant director, is looking at so that we, you know, hopefully we'll come to you with a more improved picture from last year. But I have sat here for three years and, and it's been, so it's really good that actually the small bits that we've done, even during Covid, have made an impact. So, so hopefully we will see an improved picture around that. Because it's raising that awareness and people feeling confident and comfortable just to check out. Because is it safeguarding or isn't it? So anybody that rings us is never inappropriate. They're ringing us for a reason. They need some information, advice. It might result, might not result in safeguarding. But it might be helpful for them to kind of have that reassurance, which they share with their neighbours or friends and feel more comfortable.
Brilliant. Thank you. Councillor Ennis to wrap up?
Yeah, I just want to come back on that point. Actually, a number of points have been made. I think whilst it's important that the council and statutory agencies are key to carrying out safeguarding adults, I think the members of the public are key and they add value and councillors would be part of that. That sometimes a gut feeling of your neighbour or someone you speak to or, you know, you feel is not right. I don't think you should triage it. You shouldn't triage. You shouldn't think about it. Maybe, you know, will I, won't I? And often members of the public have made reports and requests that have come out to be invalid. And then safeguarding, you know, adults have taken place and investigations and reports and adults have been safeguarded. So we can't underestimate the work of communities, voluntary agencies, as well as statutory partners in the council, that we can, as I said, triage vulnerable, safeguarding vulnerable adults. So it's, it is working together. In some ways, it's everybody's responsibility in many ways. And it's something that we cannot say enough about, you know, don't leave it for somebody else. Because as people get older, they become more vulnerable. And that's why we, we need to stress that out and emphasize that point. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you to Shona Douglas as well for that contribution. Are the committee happy to put this forward to the Berkshire West Safeguarding Report? Agreed. Thank you very much. Okay, the next item will be discussed in a private session. So I'm going to move the following motion that pursuant to section 100A of the Local Government Act 1972 as amended, members of the press and public be excluded during the consideration of the following item of the agenda. As it is likely that there will be disclosure of exempt information as defined in paragraph three of part one of Schedule 12A as amended of that act. Thank you.